All right, we are live.
We'll get started. Welcome, everybody, to the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one Board of Education Work Session. Sorry for our delay. It is five thirty seven.
All right.
Let's get started. Welcome, everybody, to the November sixteen, two thousand and twenty one Board of Education Work Session. Sorry for our delay. It is five thirty seven. Let's get started. Welcome, everybody, to the November sixteen, two thousand and twenty one. All right. As you said, there are multiple issues, so. But it's five thirty seven P. M. Ms. Hagman, can you call a roll, please?
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Present.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Here.
Mr. Eland?
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
All right. Number two additions to the agenda was a discussion on the five-year forecast. Does anybody have any other additions? Okay. So what do you want? Huh?
I defer to you, but yeah, this is the only addition that we have is the five-year forecast.
All right. And is that, we'll, and you just have it in that spot?
Yes.
Okay. Go right ahead, then.
Well, as you know, November is the month that we have to submit our five-year forecast. Since this is my first five-year forecast for Bethel, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to review the long report. It's long, so it's twenty-plus pages. So if you have questions about it, you can let me know, and we can go through it. Well, you know, I'm going to work on a presentation and a PowerPoint and all that for the board meeting on the twenty-second. So this is for your review, and if you have any questions or if you think that I've omitted something, I'm open to suggestions. I, this was my first time using this software as well, so. You know, I'm gonna go back through it because I think there is one issue that I'm still having, which is it's still listing some of our grants as removed, you know, needing to be renewed for twenty grants levies, and it's already been renewed, so I've got to move that area. So I'm aware of that. But please feel free to take a look, look at my notes. If you have questions, please let me know, and I'm gonna work on the final document. I don't foresee any big changes, but it looks good. We're in the black for the five years, so that's always a good thing. Yeah, that doesn't happen very often. So take a look and, you know. But I don't foresee any big changes to that.
And it's in Word docs now?
It is in Word docs, yes.
That's a great change because the last five-year forecast had us about two point three million dollars negative, and there was, you know, just a very poor forecast.
Right.
All right.
I'm pretty confident in this one. I think there, if there are any tweaks, they're gonna be pretty small. Yeah. We are deficit spending this year, but from this point on, we should be okay, unless there's some big crazy things that happen and that can't happen.
It's so crazy how they can go from one forecast to completely different.
Well, you also got the fair funding.
Oh, that's right, our funding change that we didn't have.
That's a big change for us because that's a lot of money that we didn't have before. Now, I don't have all the nuances to that until December because it's such a big change. The D E has an Ohio Department of Ed has put all those things into play, so we won't know all the final details until December. But luckily, we have two opportunities to update the five years. So when we do know all that, we can certainly put that in the forecast and get it up and running. But for right now, I'm pretty confident based on what we know today that we are in the black, so.
Well, and it also helps. Historically, we haven't had all of our levies approved with the exception of probably the income tax renewal altogether because our, we put the.
Yeah, everything else looked good. The only thing we have outstanding is the income tax in two thousand and twenty-six, which would be almost four.
So, um, so I'm just saying thank you to all the people who voted because, I mean, that's a huge, huge blessing that we don't have to go back and ask for money, at least for a few years.
Yes, yes, it is.
So I do want to emphasize that because they have one levy continuing and one for ten years. That's, it's just, I mean, we have the most levies of any school in Miami County, so it is a huge, huge blessing that the voters have, have allowed us to continue that path. And Tina, one thing I want to say, if Forecast Five is not the right tool for us, I know you're still getting your feet wet in it. Do not be afraid to come to us and say, hey, I want to do this a different way. Because, I mean, at one time, it was economical for us to use and, but I know the software's changed. It's got a lot more complicated, and so, you know.
It is my first dive into this software because it is, I always found it to be a little expensive, but it does have a lot of things that are available in other software packages. So before I say, yeah, let's, you know, I'm just trying to learn all the little nuances, so, but yeah. But, um, yeah, so far, so good, I think.
Do we get billed by the number outside school we are, or how did they bill us for the software?
It's usually by how difficult your books are and how big you are. So depending on how many levies you have, you know, so like if your school district with no levies, I'm sure it's less. Yeah, so it just depends, but it's not too bad, but it is a little pricey, but not too bad.
Do.
So since this is your first one, yeah, can you just give us a little bit about your philosophy when you did the forecast? Just to, you know, because Brennan was kind of very conservative on, probably gonna say this back, just to help behind it. On estimating what we.
Conservative.
What we were bringing, yeah.
Over on expenditures.
Right. And I think most treasurers are that way. I am, I try to be as accurate as possible. So I don't know everything, all the nuances like I want to because I've only been here a few months, but I kept like some of Brennan's estimates as far as like on the tip, which I think are a little low. But I kept those in place for those revenue streams, just so I can see a full year, see what the pattern is. And then it's easier to say, hey, we have more money than to say, hey, we gotta cut something because we don't have enough. So I try to be, you know, on the conservative side just because of that, but not, I'm not, I don't think I'm as conservative as maybe Brennan was. Yeah, so I try to get as close to the actuals as I possibly can, so. And then on the expenditure side, the same way, I just try to get as close to what I think the actuals are gonna be, but and give yourself, you gotta give yourself, like in your home budget, a little bit of bumper room for emergencies, right? So we don't have, we won't have a savings account, so to speak, which is what I would tell you to do with your home account, but we have to put something in the appropriations for an emergency kind of thing, just to keep that, you know, to have an option if something happens. But, you know, so, yes, I'm conservative, but not that conservative, so.
Okay, it's just, it's, you know, extremely unique, right? So as an example, when we even did negotiations last time, I mean, it was pretty much, we are bankrupting the school by, we went forward with any one of the deals. And then whatever we finally agreed to was that we were gonna have to make cuts in two years.
Right.
And I'm not talking like a little, we're talking like over a million dollars in cuts, and so it's, you know, we.
Right, because you went from being a cap district where your funding was capped and you were not getting funding for all those extra kids that were coming into the district. You were being funded at what your headcount was in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, right? And that was a big difference for you guys, right? That was, we had a big, you know, we had a big growth. So you were capped and not getting all of your funding. You could have gotten any four million dollars extra.
Yeah, we were four million dollars, four million dollars.
The Fair School Funding Act gave us over the next two years, I think, one point three million dollars.
Yeah, one point four change, yeah.
So, so well, that would have been that gap that they were talking, we're gonna see in year two.
That was low. If they would have went through with the cut Patterson, there would have been more money.
Right, they're phasing it in so we don't get a hundred percent of what we should be, but hopefully soon, we will be what they call a formula district, meaning we're being paid as the formula intends for us to be paid, which, you know, right now, we're at thirty eight hundred dollars a kid as far as what the state pays, you know, but it's better than where we were. We were twenty-two hundred, so we're stepping up, right?
Yeah. Well, and I think people for our community, right? Although we're moving up to the, would you say thirty-two hundreds?
Right.
Where that same kid is going to Huber, Huber City Schools is, there's seven thousand.
They have, they're, yeah, yeah.
So this is insane.
Right.
The twenty-two hundred dollars per student, that was part of, that was the reason why we were losing four point three million per year.
Right.
From state funding that we weren't receiving because we were a cap district. It'd be nice if they were, if they would pass the cut Patterson, that would help significantly. We'll take the one point four, but yeah, it's still not where we need to be.
So, yeah, I'm assuming when you were.
Is in the same area.
Right, when you're, when you were in negotiation, this was just a fair detail as far as the funding mechanism that was in place because we just really, you know, the treasurer were like, yeah, I don't think it'll ever pass, but we hope, and so we kept pushing for it, but we didn't get the full cut Patterson, but we got, we got close enough, so we got close. And if they don't fund it beyond this by any, and that'll be a shame. I hope they continue to.
Yeah.
Push it through, so.
So there is a chance, though, that if it does not continue, that we could be, we could be back to where we were.
Correct, yes, right. If we don't get it beyond, it's only in place for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. So if the legislators decide that they don't want to fully, they don't want to continue the phase-in for twenty-four and twenty-five, then that will have a drastic.
Change.
Change, yeah.
My question is, as far as our five-year goes, what did you predict for the continued by next by end?
Yeah, continued at what it is currently.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't add more to it, but continuing the levels we're at.
Stay the same.
Mm-hmm. Right, which is, to me, is being conservative because typically what will happen when they pass a new legislation for funding is they go, you won't get less than you got the year before. So they say you're on a guarantee. Yeah, so we guarantee you won't get less than you got the year before, so I, I will fix that amount moving forward until we know.
Yeah, now, just, you know, it was extremely stressful even trying to make those decisions going forward.
Right.
And, and then, you know, four months later, it's like.
We got, no, I'm not saying that.
I'm just saying, like, okay, the risk, well, sit here, right?
Right, but.
The risk doesn't actually show now what.
Right, because you have, as a treasurer, we have to look at our five years, say, we don't have this money because we don't have anything official yet, right? We're hoping we get some money, but until we have something official, I can't sign that four twelve. So I can see how that's hard when you're in that negotiation stance. Right now, we're hoping that money's coming, but until it's actually here, written into law, which you don't find out until June thirty, July one.
Yeah, one thing to keep an eye on legislatively that may have an impact on Fair Funding School Act is there's some serious talk and traction out there in regards to providing, and I know it's been talked about in the past, but there are discussions about providing full funding to schools in Ohio for mandatory preschool.
Right.
And if that's the case, then I don't know if they're gonna do Fair Funding Act. That's gonna be a huge cost to make schools provide, and provide a hundred percent funding for.
Yeah.
Because right now, preschool is not funded by the state, which is why a lot of schools don't have it. I don't know if that, that passes, I could have an impact on.
I'm going to do.
Or, yeah, school fund, they can't pay for everything. Something's gotta go.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm sure you will have questions.
Yeah.
Um, that's why, you know, I like to give you something to review beforehand, and, you know, like I said, it's out there, it's in public view, people can review it, and any questions, just sort of, you know, I'm gonna do a presentation and, and all that for the next one. I'll keep it short, but. So, but I just want everyone to have an opportunity to review, and if I'm off my rocker about something.
These are the guidelines for addressing the board, so this will be here, the public regarding agenda items. Yeah.
Just have one, Natalie Donhue. I know that on the agenda is the policy for purchasing A G six-three-two-zero-A revision A. Item K of that, I don't think it was completely filled out. The sentence is, it says, quotes will be requested for any item or group of items in a single transaction costing more than, and then there's nothing.
Yep, we're gonna make a decision on what that is.
Okay, okay, good. And I just, just wanted to, in case it wasn't brought up later, I thought I would ask now.
Yes, ma'am, no, it's perfect.
And then, um, I, I know that five thousand was crossed out up to fifty thousand, and I hope that you can explain or detail later as you walk through how you, or, you know, what the decision was to come to ten times that original amount instead of any other amount in between or whatever other number there might be. And that was all, so, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely articulate that. All right, important dates for communication. Does facilities committee meeting on the twenty-second at six? And then followed by our board meeting? And then going to the Thanksgiving holiday break? Coming back in at the seventh of December for our work session, and we had a Bethel choir performance and a high school concert, followed by a regular meeting, and one hour early release elementary and middle school concert, winter break. Anything else we need to add or missing?
I don't think that time on the concerts.
At, oh, three P. M.?
Yeah. Of the high school. Well, it's Sunday, okay, it's on Sunday, sorry.
That's right.
That is right, sorry. Okay, never mind. Was trying to locate it.
Yeah, I've already checked.
All right, so Tammy, I'll turn it over to you.
And so. Me, Tina.
Tina, sorry.
But you did.
My apologies.
People always want to call me Tammy, I don't know. All right, couple things that I need, I know for work sessions, we don't like to have anything approved, but this is the COPS debt payment. It needs to be paid tomorrow, so I need your approval to go ahead and pay it. And I, you know, the invoice is dated October thirteenth, and it was faxed. I don't know who still faxes, but apparently U. S. Bank did, and it got lost in the transition. I don't know, but I didn't get a P. O. on it time. I put it in November first, thinking that it would be payable December first, right? And it was payable November sixteenth, so they want it two weeks in advance, so I just need your approval to make that payment. So.
Since it's just one item on there, we can, instead of adding it to the agenda, we can just do a motion to accept it.
Okay.
So I set the motion to accept payment for the approval or certificate availability COPS debt payment. Thank you, Lyda, for the motion. Do we have a second? I'll thank you, Julie, for the second. Any further, any discussion?
Which account are we paying this on? Your oh-seven, oh, Capital Projects, that's it. So I just have a question. Like, we're gonna keep doing this, correct? I mean, we're gonna have a schedule of payments.
Yes.
So is, does the board need to approve this every time?
No, no, and, no, what will happen is, you know, now that we have a scheduled payment, and I know how U. S. Bank wants to handle it, which is two weeks in advance of the payment, then I'll have the P. O. in place. So, um, it depends upon what, what bank you're using and how they handle it. So it'll be in place. The only reason why the board has to approve this one is I can easily approve up to three thousand, and this is a million plus.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but, you know, U. S. Bank does it two weeks in advance, so now I know, and it won't happen again.
So.
All right, any other discussion items? All right, Ms. Hagman, can you call a vote?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
I thank you.
All right, so we'll move down to six other treasure items. Go ahead.
Okay, we have a few meeting minutes that need your approval on September, next time around, so September thirtieth, October fifth, October eleventh, October fifteenth, and October twenty-second. If you read through the minutes, if there's anything that you have that I missed, please let me know, but just need your approval on those items. This is our detailed check register from the new system, the redact, redesign system that shows all the checks for the month of October. Once again, any questions, just let me know. Board approval, these are our board monthly reports. We're rolling along pretty steadily. We're running a little bit behind on our revenues, but not much. One point three-two percent. I don't like a negative number in the revenues, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. Then, and the expenditures were actually, our budgets were actually running a little under as well, so, which is good, but not much, less than half a percent difference. So just keeping an eye on the budgets. The only area that sort of jumped out at me is we're spending a lot more on supplies and materials than we have in the past, so gonna have to keep an eye on that and see what we can do to slow that spending, but otherwise, we, we look pretty good. We've collected more than we've spent, which is always a good, a good thing, and we're pretty much within the benchmarks, so. Nothing that caused me any heartaches when I was trying to close the books for March. I mean, October, what month am I in, Julie? October, the fourth and the hamburger.
Maybe I lost a couple months.
No, I lost a few months. So these are our donations for the month. I did find a few more, so I'm gonna add those to November twenty-second's meeting, if that's okay with everyone, because we certainly want to get donations approved and accepted and thanked as quickly as we possibly can. This is the Montgomery County E. S. C. contract for physical therapy services. This was not included with the other Montgomery County E. S. C.
Agreements.
Agreements, and I don't know why. I think they let this one slip through the, you know, I didn't know we had it, so. But it's sixteen-plus thousand, so it's here for the board's approval.
Just be happy to go.
It's non-dead. It is not new, no. So it is not new, but I can't pay on it until they send me a contract, so they sent me a contract, so.
Just go up to the top for a second.
Sure.
Keep going.
Oh, no, it's sixty-six thousand, yeah. That's this one, sixty-six thousand, five seventy-two.
All right, so I think you said Montgomery County, but. That's really weird, it says champagne.
It says champagne, but it's Montgomery County.
Yeah.
Did it do that on the other purpose, too?
Did they? Oh, okay.
I don't understand that either.
It is the Montgomery County.
Yeah, that's it, that's what I was asking.
But not in the contract. The contract is fine, so.
Yeah.
I never made a thing about it last month either.
Right. The document stays as is, what's here.
Right, the bill was last year. Contract was sixty-six thousand. So certainly need your approval.
It's only for nineteen point five hours of work a week.
Right, nineteen point six hours of service per week. So. Okay, so we have two more certificates of availability. Once again, this is when the purchase order date is after the invoice date. Final forms, which we use for our online registration, the date is nine fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one, and the P. O. date is eleven one, two thousand and twenty-one. I spoke to the final forms representative today, and he sent me a copy of the contract so that we know when those bills are gonna come and get those taken care of.
Okay.
Then Peterson Construction did the budget for the building project. And the P. O. is dated November one because that's when they told us the drawdown money would be, you know, that's when we should start paying, but then the bill was dated October thirty-first, so.
Gotcha.
Close, but no cigar. It's fine in most cases, but if you send me a bill October thirty-first and the invoice is dated November one, I need your approval. So this is, you know, part of that G. M. P. one that we approved, so just need your approval to go ahead and pay two. It's not the whole two million, it's two hundred and.
Ninety-one.
Yeah, ninety-one thousand, so.
Ninety-two.
Yeah, yeah, so. Didn't be a problem from this point on. As part of the building project, you are required to have a retainage agreement in place. This, you have to have so much money held in reserve. We looked at that pay application for Peterson, there was eight percent of labor cost or six thousand and some change that you have to hold in reserve until the project is completed. This is an agreement with Park National Bank to provide those services. And so just for your review, doesn't need really board approval, just for your review so you're aware. So that's all my items.
All right, questions?
I just have one question. So, and you may not know this, but when we talk about using final forms and we have a, it seems like we have a whole bunch of different things that we use, there was talk of phasing some things out, right? Like consolidating certain softwares. Is that getting done or has it been done?
It's been done.
Or is it?
So the district used to spend twenty thousand dollars a year for power schools, which did not work. And then we phased that out my first year here, went to final form, which I think is about seven or eight. So we cut costs, and now we're using final forms for all enrollment for students, and then also all of our staff members do their urgency medical forms on there, as do our students, and we also use it for all of our athletic urgency medical forms and documentation paperwork. So it's one platform across the district for everything. I wasn't here for power schools. I just know when I came here, they spent a lot of money on it and they weren't using it.
Yeah, there was a, I thought there was a couple of things like that, but I just wanted to make sure they didn't get lost in the switch between.
That was the big one, was the power schools.
We had two systems that didn't talk to each other, basically.
Yeah, Power Schools does not talk with Dazzle. They're two different student information systems.
And I just want to say, as a parent, not as a board member, thank you. Everything's electronic now. It is so.
It's a little bit of a hassle the first time you fill it out, but once you get through it one time, unless your phone number or your email or your address changes, it's really just to go to the bottom, click it, and you're done very quickly.
And I wish we had had it in place over thirteen, fourteen years ago because it would have made first day of school much. I just, I truly, I do appreciate, and I know it was a process to get people converted, but it is, it is, and I'm sure for the nursing staff, it's, I mean, it's just, everything's there for people, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, very wonderful, and even for the athletic side of it, getting the updates, your students are physically uploaded, we do this.
We even use it for reminders, I think, on participation fees.
That, yep, and.
I think they also do it for maybe school fees as well.
School fees and then graduation announcements. Dawson's is here tomorrow, something like that, so that helps get, keep everybody in sync, so it's really nice. Send me an email. So. All right, any other questions for Tina?
I have one, let me do this. Yes, I just wanted to also thank Tina for getting this Park National Bank so quickly to get that together because I, 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 I mean, I talked to you in the office, and by the next day, you had the agreement, so I don't know what kind of magic you worked with your contact.
No, he was, Jason at Park National was great to work with, so he was, he was able to turn that around.
So a big thank you to Park National for getting that agreement out so promptly because things don't always happen like that.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? All right, I'm gonna turn this over to item number seven to Mr. Perks.
Real quick before we get going, I did want to give some brief recognition to a couple of our groups, P. T. O. being the big one, although we're gonna take some time to now examine our board meeting, I do think it's important for us to say thank you to those folks. Thirty-five thousand dollar donation for playground equipment for our new K. Five buildings, a huge contribution from, from that group, and like many of our support groups throughout the district and the community, they've been really good to Bethel and our kids. So thank you to those folks for the thirty-five thousand dollar donation, and then also to the, the girls can, it should be, actually should be Can Be Elite. That's the Sunday fall week, they play here at Bethel every year, and then they, because they use our facilities, they. And they give a contribution to the girl basketball program and then Myers for a gift card to help support some of the. Prizes or awards that we give out to our kids for positive behavior in elementary school. All three great programs that help the school up.
Yeah, excellent, and then I believe you posted yesterday, you sent us an email yesterday. Or the last week Friday, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about that as well.
Miami County.
Yeah, I forgot it's the lead from Facebook. We had, thank you for reminding me, credit goes to Mrs. Sebastian, she was the one that did the legwork as far as submitting the application process and collecting a lot of the required information that they needed during the application. Bethel Local Schools Athletic Boosters, I should say Bethel Schools, the Bethel Athletic Boosters received a grant from the Miami County Foundation in the amount of ten thousand dollars that we used towards our athletic stadium project. And would like to thank the folks at Miami County Foundation, they give out a huge amount of money every year. They hit a lot of, a lot of different organizations and entities throughout Miami and also Montgomery County. And we're really fortunate enough to get one of their highest donation amounts. And so any amount we gets helpful, but we appreciate the partnership that they have with the district and their support, not only our district but also our students and our student applicants. And so, I'd like to thank Lori as well, thanks Lori, good job.
Well, Justin, Justin wrote a letter and I had, because of my past history at Athletic Boosters, I had a lot of contacts to do it. And I'm very grateful to the Miami County Foundation, I mean, it was, it was a team effort. I mean, Damon and Lizana, so I have gone out to several people and gotten donations. And we were very fortunate on our first submission to receive ten thousand dollars, I mean, very grateful.
Now some more good news on number seven, on the agenda for consideration this evening is approval of administration personnel. In the crowd this evening with us is Mr. Jacob Watson, he is a graduate of Bethel High School. He's also a graduate of the University of Dayton, in two thousand and nineteen in communications, was a member of University of Dayton marching band, had a lot of experience in that department with their social media and communications aspects of, with, with the program. Has skill sets that we thought would be a very good district or good fit with our district with social media and photography and Microsoft Office Suites and Adobe Premier and public speaking. So thank you for being here tonight, Jacob, hopefully you get a yes vote, I'm confident you probably will. Welcome back to the high, it's good to always be able to bring back qualified graduates, especially some. Skill set and communications, and I think will be a, a good addition to our staff and our district and continue to take our communications department to even higher, higher steps.
Do we have a motion to approve it to your contract with Communications Director Jacob Watson?
Oh, my.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you Danny for the second, any discussions?
Well, I'm just gonna say, so I had asked the question, maybe Mr. Perks would like to repeat the answer to. I asked him if two hundred twenty-five days was enough, given our, our communication situation. So if he wants to say a few more.
Sure, obviously this is a little bit different of a contract, previously we had a service contract through an L L C. And so obviously there wasn't a set days or hours, it was kind of as work needed. The direction we went in with this contract was more of an administrative contract in the district, which gives us a little bit more control over work calendar and those kind of things. The main purpose for using a two twenty-five contract versus a two sixty. There's only a handful of administrators in the district that receive a two sixty, which work year-round. Super kind of treasurer, your maintenance supervisor, and your high school principal, middle school, elementary principals are on two twenty-fives similar to this, we will have some flexibility with the work calendar to be able to get days worked throughout the summer. By creation of that calendar and working with Jacob and H R department and central office to make sure that we have coverage throughout the summer. I just personally didn't feel that we were in a place right now where we needed a full-time two sixty communications director when we don't have two sixty principals as well, so that was kind of the purpose behind it. Another reason why we went with the two-year contract, and Mrs. Hagan could correct me, but I believe all administrative contracts by our R I S code need to be between two and five years. So I don't think you could give an administrative contract on a one-year, which was asked as well.
I thought we all started.
Administrative?
Yeah, administrative contracts can go one to, one to five. Okay, yeah, but typically what I've seen in the past fifteen years is it's two or three.
Disability to the individual that we're hiring.
Well, I missed though, I thought it was two to five for administrative, I didn't make it to one year.
You can't, it's very uncommon, but you can, but Ohio Rice Cook does allow it, but not many take advantage of us.
Right. Okay, any other questions, discussions? Alright, Miss Hagan, could you call the votes please?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elon?
Yes, excellent, welcome aboard Jacob, look to the future, forward to your magical work.
Yes, welcome, when do you start?
The twenty-ninth, so.
Excellent.
Great to be back, I appreciate the opportunity given to me by the board as well as Mr. Perks. You know, as a graduate of Bethel, it's great to be home, and I can't wait to work with all of you and, you know, do service back to the community.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, you know, as we hire our Bethel students back, I think, especially in this role. You, you have the spirit of the school from when you went through to what the school is now, just a few years later. I think your perspective is gonna be a very unique perspective of how you wanna portray the school. Right, in our communication process, so I, I think it's gonna be a, a beautiful product already just from those.
And no shortage of challenges, I would say.
Yes. Lots of challenges in there, right? Yeah, there's only, there's only one thing, so we didn't need to add it to the calendar and then spout it on the calendar. So yes, welcome aboard, thank you for applying and coming back. Alright.
Good to go, number E.
Yes, okay.
This is one that appears rarely on agendas, anytime our substitute teacher list, the Miami County E S C changes, we have to reapprove the list to be able to use the substitute teachers, either through mostly teachers, but could also be. Aids as well, special education personnel, et cetera, if you are in the E S C. So that's the purpose for letter A. Letter B is one that I emailed you folks in regards to, like you know of. Sorry to hear that Mrs. Patel is, Kate is no longer going to be serving on our custodial crew as second shift. I would like to wish her best of luck as she goes back to college. So hopefully our school works out well for her, and we appreciate her services to the district and what she's done on our custodial crew. Well, so once again, she was a Bethel grad and it's nice to be able to bring back. We're currently in the process of, of speaking with several folks that potentially may be interested in filling that role in second shift. It's not a lucrative job, that's the, that's the bathroom detail, so that's a hard one to find. And it'll seem like them people want to do this bathroom. Letter C are some resignations as well, Amanda Amber, so I wanna make sure I say that word. Name frankly, high school cheer coach, and Charlie Hawk as JV basketball coach. Letter D will be review of supplemental positions, fall, winter, non-sports. You can see we're potentially adding Chase Doulet, who's a teacher in the district as a home instructor. That's required via one of our students' I E Ps with their individualized education plan with special education. So we need to provide so many hours of home instruction, thanks to Mr. Doulet for filling that role. Alyssa Coker, who serves as an E S C employee, working with our special education population. As since their school psychologist, who also is being willing to help and serve as a secondary school monitor when we need those. And then Christina Brooks, who was a volunteer for the cheerleading program, would slide into Amanda's position as, as the head coach. Letter E is review of absences for a couple of employees that are on S M L A leave. Holly Hughes and Brian Personberger. Letter F will be review of gate worker, once again adding Alyssa Coker, E S C employee as a potential additional gate worker to help with extracurriculars in the evenings. And then letter G and H will be clubs that I spoke with our high school principal in regards to. It's a couple of new potential high school clubs that they'd like to add. And he'll be able to speak on that at our upcoming school board meeting, I had a couple of questions sent to him as well. From school board members in regards to kind of some of the items within the, each of the clubs. So I've asked him to either provide a verbal update at the meeting or a written response that I'll provide to all members as well. Letter I is review of a resolution acknowledging the O S C C's design phase review comments. That'll be some discussion at our work session, or excuse me, our facilities meeting as well with Garnet Miller interviewing those comments from the pre-K five building, which we've talked about previously. Letter J is an item that we can discuss here briefly this evening, it'll be on the agenda for consideration at the board meeting. The district currently does not have official job descriptions for all the positions throughout the district. Essentially what the district has been doing is kind of pulling canned job descriptions off the data consortium, which is where we post all of our positions. And so we kind of felt like we're in a place with our growth and expansion, but also our current positions that be a little bit more formalized if we had a written job description that folks could receive from the district during the application process and also the hiring process to kind of know exactly what that job entails. So the Whittle Consulting Group has provided a quote in regards to job descriptions. And for our size and growth and being able to expand a little bit, because we're adding roughly four or five new positions a year. We were looking at probably sixty-six to seventy position job description range, which would give us a little bit of room if we could add certain positions that have been identified in the district, knowing that it's a matter of time before they come, our size.
Yeah, that's also hoping that you'd be looking at, you know, as we're building these out, at least some of the future ones that we essentially could add. Not only in positions in the teaching environment or support staff, but in the front office as well as we see this growth continue, at least have some of them canned and ready.
And then letter K is one that I've been working with Mr. Slope, our high school principal on. One of the goals that we sat down and talked about at the end of year, we're trying to continue to build more connections with the school and the community. And obviously Bethel Local Schools has a heavy military influence in the community with a lot of our folks that have chose this as a place to live with their current employment at Bright Path Air Force Base. Our Department of Education provides a unique program for school districts to become a Purple Heart School, which is a lot of criteria that gets met, including like, for example, today, a resolution that would be more considered for approval, and then we have a number of other criteria that he's gonna talk about as far as creating page, a page on our website that gives information for families to be able to connect for services because they're military. Being able to host a military, beyond just your Veterans Assembly, a military event to bring in military families into your school system. We've had discussions with Color Green Creative, which has recently completed the Hall of Fame display on also creating a military recognition display in the high school for all past graduates. But also community members as well, maybe people that did not graduate from here but now currently reside here. Where we can collect with all the branches of the military, those folks that are either from Bethel or currently residing in Bethels that have served in the military is a, a place for visitors to kind of stop and look and see. So we have a lot of things in the works with this, thanks to Mr. Slope for taking the ball and running with it. And you're gonna see probably a lot more discussion over the next, this course of this school year in regards to a lot of those things that we're working on to become a Purple Heart School from Ohio Department of Education. So this is the first, the first phase of that process, that is the resolution. And I'll have him give more of an update on it at the board meeting, if he can talk in detail some of the work he's been doing in regards to that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Perks.
Yep.
If you have a question, you can.
Yeah, so I just have a question on the job descriptions, letter J.
Sure.
Why do we not write those ourselves? I mean, is the process, are they gonna come to the people and ask them for input?
That's certainly part of the process, they've sent some sample ones already. He definitely gave us the option to be able to give those to folks that it applies to, like secretaries or principals or teachers, et cetera, and allow them to take a look at it and flexibility as far as editing them or eliminating criteria that doesn't necessarily feel, fit within that job description, so yeah, that's, that is definitely an option.
So we can't just write them ourselves though and save the money and put it toward the K five?
I, I think it's based on, I think, previous discussions, it was about the applying of time to do that. To have them ready so that we could have a significant base of these job descriptions already there. And maybe once we have that base, it'll be easier to create more in the same template or format. But I believe, did I catch that correctly? I mean, one, I think it's just the biggest most time to be able to produce them with the quantity there is.
But if they were divided up to the people who were owning them as you go, you know, like administrators or directors or whoever, then that would spread. I mean, it's not like one person has to write sixty of them.
Right.
Right, one person might get three or four, some portion of them, just, just wondering.
Yeah, I think, although, you know, Justin, I'm more than likely that'd be an administrative function, so I would call more in line on the front office staff, right, Tina and Justin.
If you weren't inconsistent, I mean, you'd have to have some sort of one person, or you'd get a lot of different versions of what one would look like.
But I think, yeah, but the key, I think the key factor in those position descriptions is ensuring the legal sufficiency of how they're written and the consistency. Because that would be based on whether a person meets the requirements of their position when they go to apply or for protection to the school, that here was our position description we advertised, you don't meet the criteria. Or in the event of negative events that could occur, so that you no longer meet your position description. So I need to discuss an improvement as well, and I think those need to be clearly established and validated. In my assumption.
And Julie, I, I'm, I'm quite frankly, this is my sixth year on the board and I'm embarrassed we don't need job descriptions, I'll be quite honest. You asked for those one of your first time.
The first day I was in the office, but that still doesn't mean we need to pay for it. Well, I mean, this is what we do, is we say, oh, well, so much time has passed, now it's an emergency, let's pay somebody to do it.
Well, I thought they were done, I didn't realize we didn't have job descriptions, I was led to believe we had them, in fact, we were currently recycling them from other places, we'll just.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and that's to no avail of Justin. And that's in our beginning stages of the four years that I've been here. And I think this is just trying to right the ship as we go forward. In the grand scheme, I get, I understand what you're saying, right, six five hundred, was it six five hundred? Five thousand? Seventy-two, seventy-two, yeah. I, I know that we're, we're cutting things in the building project. And so one would say, why are we cutting there and spending here? But I think the seventy-two hundred dollars that it would take to get these done will probably pay in multiple dividends in the. Will probably pay in multiple dividends in the long term. Uh, legal, legal issues and personnel. My thoughts. That's what's gonna hold up in court. That's, that's what they're gonna be held to invent the. Uh, one of those, you know, positive or negative.
So once these are written, we own them, we can change them?
You own them. Yeah, you can actually post them on your website if you pay the bill. I mean, I've been a part of the district, my last district. Where I walked in superintendent and the uh. School district taken job descriptions, put them on the website. I think my first month there, I received a letter that the district owed a gentleman seventy five hundred dollars because we copyright, forged copyrighted. Job descriptions. That was a great thing to walk into, tell the board, at least I could say it wasn't my fault, but by the way.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So we have to pay more to post them or there are?
No, the point is there's districts that have not paid and just.
Who violated the copyright.
Threats, just ta- taking them and using themselves and then you get yourself in trouble.
I think for me, it always comes back to that human cost. And I'm thinking about how many things we're asking, the the key people who would be in charge of writing these. We're asking so much. I mean, we just heard about this project Mr. Slope is undertaking, uh, Purple Heart School. Which is something we didn't ask him to do, but that nevertheless is taking great time, but it will benefit our community. Um, but there are a lot of things that we're asking in many, many hats that we're asking people like Mr. Slope and Mr. Fergs and Mrs. Hagaman to wear. And these are the people who would be asked to write these descriptions. And I think to put something that is, let's face it, it is very time consuming to do these, do them appropriately and to do them well. Or even if they farm it out to people below them, to then pull them in, edit them, go through them and try and make them right. And accurate, that is very time consuming to do it correctly. And the human cost of that and the hours that we spend, I think is a lot of us ask when I'm looking at the cost of it financially.
So you didn't say that um to give up time to do this instead of, for example, Mr. Slope. Uh, jumping in and covering a bus route.
Right.
That now kids are, there's no one to drive the bus.
But they have, they're gonna have to be involved anyhow. Okay, I hear what you're saying, but they're gonna have to be involved, right? Or we're not gonna have accurate descriptions to begin with.
Hundred percent.
Writing them is gonna have to go to that person and say, give me your input, so.
Way different in time, will take a lot less time.
Yeah.
A half hour versus like two to three hour potentially, I would say.
Okay, from my experience, I asked the question, answer.
Okay.
Asked an answer.
Any other uh questions?
Not with that. I mean, are we not talking about the clubs until we get the answers back?
No, the whole thing's open, but.
Yeah, we didn't definitely talk about them. I want to be honest, I don't remember too much about them. You can have the information that's put down into DVD and email. Uh, I don't know how it's typically been done here with addition of clubs. It's just they ask and we got some group. We haven't added any clubs since I've been here.
I mean, I. I have the past has been four years. They have to buy, is it four years? Two years uh on their own full sustainment. Um, show positive growth and and be able to predict the impact of that group.
I do know education, as far as sustainment with like costs. Or sustainment as far as like participation.
Both, that they have to be able to do that, provide the advisors, do all that on their own.
Okay.
Um, before it's brought into. But we also approve them as a club so that they could utilize the the school facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, their mission and what they're trying to do, I don't really have an issue. Obviously, I mean, they've seemed pretty innate. They're not really that big of a deal. I think that when you think about um one of the groups and the fact that we're also asking athletic boosters. Earn money at school events to help fund our stadium project. And that potentially take away from some of their funding. I, I don't wanna shut a group down that's trying to do a great thing for students, but at the same time. I don't wanna impact any income going towards athletic boosters at the theater. So I would ask that they potentially.
The baking food.
Yeah, I would ask that they potentially look at a different outlet for their sales. Whether that's immediately after school or. I don't know what they thought about study hall in the cafeteria, if they can sell then. I, I mean, I don't know if there's a different time for them to sell. But I don't want to take away any sales for athletic boosters.
Did they indicate they were gonna sell it at events?
At school events.
Is it?
Correct. And Use Machine, for example, has had a bake sale at our theater events for years. That's one of their main fundraisers. I don't wanna take away from them either, because it's already an existing group that's been approved. So it's just those little things like that that stick out to me.
I could definitely have conversation with them.
But D and D's been played at lunchtime already for often for a long time. So that's whatever.
Well, and they may just need to check with athletic boosters, because some, if like, if we have a big game, it may not be a problem. Yeah, I never know, because sometimes some of the basketball games, I know Homecoming brought stuff in, so it's just, right, it's something to be conscious of if. Yeah, so they're not, um.
But they're dollar brownies or.
But Homecoming's $2 racing cups.
I mean, I know where I'd rather do them when you go right now until the stadium's paid off.
Okay.
Right?
Yep, very well.
Maybe. Maybe it is.
Okay.
Just thought I'd mention.
Good, thank you.
Uh, board items. Um, this is a board policy six, three, two, zero, A. Um, this was as a recommendation to change um. So, thank you, administrative guidelines uh for purchasing contracted services. Thank you. Um, in the past, this was at fifty thousand already previously. Um, when we uh.
I think maybe it was at twenty five. There was top, I don't know.
We, we did not change. Since you and I have been on the board, I know you think that that's the one of the change, but we did not change it. We discussed changes assigning money, but we never did.
Yeah, I could have swore we changed this. I, I did too.
It says last revised was December of twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
But that was, you think, as for what Neola?
Yeah, I think that was Neola's, you know, suggestion for a a change.
So I asked about getting stats, but remember we talked about it and then we, we talked about the fact that everything that would fall under the five thousand. So we did not change.
Uh, I know we went back and forth because it wasn't, there was. Discussion and trying to to reduce that back. Um, so, but this would um allow for um the state, the state requires. For purchases contracted services or anything over fifty thousand, you're required to have quotes, re-quotes.
Actually, fifty thousand is your limit for going up to bid when it comes to construction.
Okay.
Now, I did do a survey of all those districts and I I shared the results that I got. And the only ones, bless you, the only ones that, um, the only one that wasn't at fifty thousand was Troy, which was, I mean. Tip City, which was at ten, and they have a relatively new treasurer and she's like, I didn't look at that. We're gonna have to change that too. Um, so it's hard for the courses that fifty thousand, which is your bid limit. It used to be twenty five, which was your bid limit previously. And 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 as prices increase. That limit was increased by legislation. Now, um, this is on purchase service contracts. If you want to increase that to twenty five and then construction to fifty, that's fine. You have your options. This is tied to your six thousand board policy, purchasing policy, but it's an administrative guideline. It's the sixty three twenty A. I just asked that, you know, five thousand's really, really low.
Right, because our policy doesn't specify anything.
It does not specify, right.
And in fact, that policy does not specify the twenty five thousand that we all were told.
Right.
Was the signing threshold, right?
That's, that's what we've been following.
That was an interesting to the, to learn of.
Yeah.
And that's the one we were talking of changing anyhow.
Right.
That's what we've been following since I've been here.
Right, it's twenty five thousand, but the language says five.
Alright.
But I mean, there's no signing.
Right, so what I talked to Julie about and I think others as well is that in your organizational meeting. You should actually set a signing authority for your treasurer and your superintendent, however you want to do it. I've been in districts where they name the superintendent and treasurer, or you can name the superintendent whenever you want. Um, so and as the purchasing agent and then, and then. A signing authority.
Oh.
That way, you don't have to worry about policy. You can just pass a resolution to change it, increase it, reduce it, do whatever you need. In the future. Um, and so every January, you revisit that and so that you can have that discussion. I just put fifty thousand out there because that was the response that we were getting back from most of the districts in this area. A lot of the districts were bigger. Um, but um, with a construction project in place, you know. Fifty thousand sounds like a lot of money, but it really isn't. Um. But if, you know, you want to do purchase services at twenty five and construction at fifty, I completely understand. I just want the policy and the guidelines to match what we're doing.
Okay.
That makes sense.
What is uh page two, there is just the remainder of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the other thing was, and tell me if I'm saying this wrong, this is, this is my understanding. So for the, the um, construction part of it. This is, these are items that are not in the twenty five and a half million. So additional items and the example that we talked about was the Pioneer. Which I didn't even realize was outside of the twenty five million. Correct, so you're sixteen thousand, six, six hundred and ten dollars. But P O that they wanted to run the electric to the yearly. To the site, right?
That's, that's the word unfortunately used, if you know.
And so the, the limit of the twenty five or the fifty, whatever we set, is if the amount they're proposing is above that threshold. Then we have to get competitive bids.
You have to get more approval.
We have to get competitive bids for construction over fifty thousand, unless it's a sole provider, in this case Pioneer, entered sole provider. You can't have somebody else doing it. But yes, fifty thousand or more, you have to get competitive bidding for construction.
Okay.
And board.
Always, and board approval, yes, because if we go out to bid, you get a contract the board has to approve it.
Okay, so if we set that at twenty five thousand, then the board would have to approve it at twenty five thousand. And we get contracts, competitive bids at that number.
Your competitive bid would be at fifty.
For construction, but if the board wants us to get multiple, are you asking if we get multiple quotes for something that's twenty five thousand? Because we aren't required by law to get bids. We could get quotes or proposals.
Okay, so let me separate it out. So the construction, the state determines that and we, we can control that no matter what. We couldn't make it twenty five or we couldn't make it a hundred. It's fifty, is that correct?
Can go above it.
It's, yeah, you can't go above fifty. Now, could you make it less? I'm sure you probably spend, but it would.
I've never heard.
It would, yeah, I have never heard of that and I would have a hard time getting the architect and everyone else to do it. Without additional cost to the visitor, you know what I mean? Because usually there's specs and all that stuff that has to be written that I can't.
So, so my, my concern, I guess, is. We can spend a lot of money without even knowing about it.
Right.
If, if the, if the limit is fifty thousand. So, um.
On the construction project?
On anything. It, it doesn't matter to me whether it's construction or not construction, because even if it's on the construction project, it's outside the twenty five million. So it's gonna be additional money that the school is spending to do whatever that particular item is. So it seems to me like I, as a board member, would wanna know about that. So that's why I'm asking the questions and my, my take would be, I like the twenty five thousand. I'm okay with fifty for construction. For the contract piece of it. And then this is separate from the signing threshold, correct? This, which you would recommend that is done at the meeting in January.
The organization.
Organization, right, correct. So.
But you don't have something in place now, so, yeah, I would like to have something in place, because right now. Yeah, we can't sign a contract because you don't have, you didn't pass a resolution. And in January, that gave anybody signing authority and the only signing authority that we have is this language of five thousand.
Well, no, we gave, we gave um. Not with a dollar amount, but if we didn't give a dollar amount, then isn't it? But this is for competitive bids. It's not just for.
Any contracted.
All contracted services.
That could be your bio milk for the cafeteria. It could be.
That's a supply, but yeah, any service that exceeds five thousand dollars currently should come in contract form to the board for approval.
Gotcha. So I'm okay with upping this. I would like it to be twenty five thousand.
That makes sense.
That's kind of a nice middle of the road number. The schools that had the fifty were bigger. I know prices are going up. I know we're getting a new school, but it can be changed. When those numbers need to be changed.
So Tina, can you tell me um the contracts that you're seeing? What are we talking about? What's our dollar range? What do we see?
I mean, they, they will range between fifty and thirty five, you know, um. Yeah, as your number of kids go up, and then you look at number, they will charge you a per cho- per student amount. You know, so that contract goes up, you know, each year, but um. Yeah, so they range anywhere from, you know, fifteen to thirty five thousand. So I just know five thousand's way too low.
I think there's no question, I think the only five thousand is insane, but. Right, I mean, I, I guess I just wanna know, what is the impact to you and then to you, Justin, like the things that you guys are saying that you need to sign off on?
Well, I mean, if you get, the only impact, well, the biggest impact's gonna be if you have contracts come in that need to be done. You're gonna have to wait till the next board meeting before you can move forward with it, unless you wanna call more special board meetings.
Right, and we don't like to keep things in work sessions either, so.
Right, so it's.
I would put the, the thought of the fact, right, or put the thought forward that um we hired. Uh, Mr. First and Mrs. Hagaman uh under the recourse to serve our, serve the district and our staff and our community and our students. And that uh they have the best interest of all of those parties in place. That, you know, giving them the flexibility um to move forward that even though it's at fifty thousand. They're not gonna go and buy something that's forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and we won't know anything about it. Right, there's gonna be significant communication in those contracted services with us. Prior to any of them going out, so that there'd be, you know, that's gonna be a little uh high. Can we at least bring it up in the meeting uh to discuss it, so we hear about the budgeting and the process and to make sure that, you know. You know, we're good. Any of those things or even information, you know, from Tina, Justin and I had this discussion. This looks good. This is appropriate with our budget and then we move forward uh from that.
Sure.
You know, this isn't just a school thing. This is set across the state. Right, Fire Chief of the City of New Orleans has the ability to do up to fifty thousand dollars.
For construction.
Not for anything. So.
Because that's your policy.
Uh, uh, that's the higher revised code says that, that you have up to fifty thousand to do that. They can reduce it if they so choose, but they also have faith in the person making that decision to not exceed it. And have the conversation prior to any purchases.
But that's not the case for the school, right? Because I thought it was fifty thousand for construction.
She said typically.
Well, it's fifty, the law requires fifty thousand dollars for construction. No if, ands, or buts, you have to go out to bid. That's, that's the law. Um, what legislation, I don't know what it says for signing authority. I have to go back and look. But I know that it's common practice to have it match what the construction bid is. So you will see a lot of times when you, people interchange it. So you'll hear a lot of confusion. Is this signing authority or construction? It's the same. Usually they just match the two together. It just makes life easier. Is that right? No, um, yeah, but it is what it is. Um, in Miami'sburg, my signing authority was twenty five thousand. It was a fifty five hundred, yeah, district. Um, did I make that work? Yeah, was it sometimes difficult? Sure, but you know, we can make that work. It's better than five. Um, but, yeah, so it's interchangeable, but that's why I said, you know, if you do it in January, you can set that amount. Whatever you need it to be, and then you could also change it anytime um with just a board reservation.
So, so the question then would be is, if we set it for twenty five thousand right uh from now till the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you think that's gonna have any significant impact to you or Justin? And then that will allow for the opportunity to review that twenty five and set this and the purchasing in the January.
Right, you have a big um board policy update that we have. Right, you have a big um board policy update that we have to do because of the different requirements for substitutes and things of that nature, right?
I have a Neola meeting, Mr. Park.
In December.
Next, next week, isn't it?
Okay, yeah, so. Is it Monday? We have a meeting coming up cuz there's a lot of policies that need addressed.
Usually see that coming in December, January, February, January, February and March seems to be like massive Neola updates.
I mean, I, I, I personally, Justin and Tina have both recommended fifty thousand dollars. I mean, we just approved tonight paying off costs for one point five million. I know fifty thousand is a lot of money, but compared to one point five million, it's, it's like. A drop in the bucket. I need to give them the ability to. Make these decisions as we grow. Everything is documented, right? We get all the reports. The community has access to all these reports. If anything. Is done incorrectly, I'm sure we will have people come in and tell us that. We, that we, we have never failed, failed us to do that. So I would like to, especially during this construction time and we're still growing, give them the authority to do the things they need to do. The board is supposed to be a supervisory. We're, we're not supposed to get into the day-to-day details and I feel like a lot of times we seem to do that.
Right.
I agree. I agree, and I also agree with the. They're here to run. We're not here to run. We're here to oversee.
I agree.
And if O R C is, says fifty thousand.
I think especially if we now that we have Tina here for sure. I mean, with fifteen years of experience, she's been, she's an officer of different treasury organizations made for school treasurers. It's, I don't wanna second guess her situation, but obviously we're seeing reports every single month. We're going through the check register all the time. I mean, we see these things every single month. If there gets to be a question, then at that time we can say, hey, let's put the brakes on some things and let's, let's change some dollar figures. But I don't see that happening, but clearly there are gonna be five of us at this table, no matter who those five are, they'll be watching for that. So that's our job. That's, that's what we do is to read the reports and check on things, so. Um, but obviously we also know that you guys are great about saying, hey, we got this big thing coming. Just to let you know, this is the impact of how it's gonna affectify your forecast, this is the impact, how expecting this month's numbers, whatever. We still see it. We still know what's going on.
Right. Uh. Do uh for this, does it need to be um approved retroactively to? January or just approved now?
You can, um, well, I mean, you can prove it at the next board meeting if you guys wanna talk about it, you know, the twenty-second. The last revision date was till the twenty-second, I'm whatever.
Well, I mean, at, at this point, you know, I, I feel very comfortable because I know we need this in, in place to say, you know, I will make a motion. That we amend administrative guide six, three, two, zero, A to. To reflect um. An item. I. That the services that cost more than fifty thousand require approval of the board.
You don't wanna give the public a chance of.
I will second that, Jacob.
Nope. Thank you. So we have a second discussion.
Do we also need to fill in K or will you do that?
Yeah.
That'll be next.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, I actually missed Kate. So, but we have the motion set as it is with a second. Um, so we have to make a second one for that. My point is this is in, in regards in alignment with the state of Ohio and what the state Ohio law says is appropriate. Uh, I feel that we, they have the, they need the flexibility. They have the skill, ability and the mindset to support our students, community and staff, so I'm good with it.
Especially during this construction project.
Yes. Alright, any other discussion? Did you call the vote, please?
Yes, I have a discussion. I think it's wrong that we are doing this at this meeting. We said we would not do anything that wasn't an emergency. On top of that, the public has not had a chance to come in and speak about it.
To the administrative guy.
I, I spoke with several people uh in the community and everybody felt that thousand was too much. It was too big of a jump.
They can provide that input then in January for the board to change your bet.
Well, that's, that's a different, though. That's a resolution, right? That's not to change.
A resolution will overrule this.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Say, maybe you call the vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
No.
Next, I'd like to um make a motion on letter K of the same administrative guide. Votes will be requested for any item, a group of items in a single transaction. Costing more than ten thousand dollars. Thank you, Lyda, for the second discussion. I think um most things cost a lot of money these days, but kinda keeping this that at least this will drive the fact that we'll have multiple quotes and we'll ensure that they have the best. Available uh. Cost, if it's more than ten thousand dollars.
What was this blank before in the bonus?
I think it was a twenty-five, I don't remember what it was in there, twenty-five thousand, if anything, I'll have to check. Yeah. This might be where the twenty-five thousand came into play. So.
I think we should find out what currently says could be.
We pull board docs.
Yeah.
It's right behind them.
Yes.
You don't.
No, it's blank, yeah.
Good play.
Sure.
Yeah. I feel like it's better to have a rule than no rule, so.
You have a motion on the second, right?
Yeah, this is discussion.
Better have a rule than no rule. That's my input.
Alright.
Right now, it's no rule. There's no dollar amount at all right now.
Right.
As it turns out.
Any further discussion? Yes, do.
What would they recommend the number to me?
I, right now, we've been doing. This is for us to get quotes, correct?
Yes.
Right, I. I'm pretty sure that I've given recommendations to everybody that works directly underneath, Atya, Todd, Damon, et cetera. Uh, anything over five, we've always asked for three, three quotes, but I don't, it hasn't been correct, obviously. I just was under that impression. I, I'm not saying that's the magic number, but it's kinda like the twenty-five number. That's the number we've always shared. It wasn't correct, obviously.
It still doesn't preclude you from applying five thousand.
Yeah, I just think it's good practice.
Is there anything in the policy?
Think it's good practice. We always try to go on to the best, the best product for the best price.
Like, the policy, the policy deferred straight to this administrative guideline. There's no dollar amount.
Yep.
Whatever it says here.
Any further discussion? Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with ten thousand, but I'm not okay with doing it in this meeting and that we did not give public.
Okay. Thank you. Further? Say, maybe you call the vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
No.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
So K will be ten thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other items for discussion? One on the agenda. Um, so executive session, I know that we have two items for executive session under item one. Um, is there any others? Alright, do we have a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Laura. We have a second. Oh, this is last, sorry. I thought you, I, I saw you move out of the corner of my eye. Sorry, so both of all. Yeah. Um, do we have a second?
Awesome.
Thank you, Julie. Any further discussion? Um, do you think that any of the items in one for the executive would require any action by the board?
I don't, so.
Okay, um, then there is no intent at this time to take any action after the executive session. Uh, Hagman, could you please call the vote?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move into executive session at six fifty-six P M. I'd like to thank you, everybody, for uh joining us on the YouTube. Congratulations. Congratulations to Jacob for joining us. Third communications person.
You're praying to work. I expect to dress this way every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese.
Back to here, right?
Yep, close the dots.
The dots.
To the dots.
You're too bad.